It's seven o'clock, we'll call a meeting to order if I want to rise and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call a roll. Mr. Hupkey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. March?
Mr. Ham?
Here.
Mr. Bowden?
Here.
Mr. Heck? Approval or corrections to the minutes of the August 28th, 2017 Regular Village Board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, a motion to accept as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee Bowden. Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
President.
And President Cross? Yes. Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 8/26/17, the amount of $49,447.83. Accounts payable, general fund, $93,519.99, motor fuel tax fund, $13,839.94, water and sewer fund, $18,507.74, and capital improvement fund, $133,88.83, giving a total of all funds of $113,537.55. Are there any questions on any of the bills or the payroll? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
I make a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Jones. Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item? Come up to the mic, please, and give your name for the record, please.
Adam Bunker. I just wanted to discuss tonight the potential about getting a liquor license. I realize that I'm not available, but I want to see if the board is willing to create another one. This would be for a little cafe, would have the video poker machines in it. It'd be very upscale, located off of Route 50 over there in the Sunset Plaza, so we'd be, you know, kind of keeping it away from existing businesses in town who currently offer that. So I just wanted to put that out there and kind of get some feelers and see if it's, we have picked up an application. Would like to move forward with submitting all that, but just wanted to kind of feel out the board on that.
Any of the trustees?
Answer any questions?
Yeah. Any trustees have any questions or comments?
You know, I was adamant about not having any more poker places downtown, but we talked about having them out on the fringe, and I think this is far enough on the fringe, personal opinion. I know Adam, and he says it's going to be upscale and will be. He does what he says he's going to do. He's had some projects in town before that turned out great. So that helps the problem.
I stopped in the Dallas facility over the weekend after soccer, and I was pleasantly surprised how upscale that place was, so if it's anything similar, I'm all for it. And I think Piattone could use the action machines to compete with market share of the surrounding communities. I think we're under our machine, really, so.
Can you follow up on what trustee Ham said? I'm a regular customer.
That's good.
Very upscale, very clean, very professional. Bingo man is nice. But I also agree with trustee Jones that we didn't want anything else downtown, and that I think this is, yes, I think this is good enough and far enough.
I would definitely love to see a restaurant downtown, but I'm just throwing that out there. Not saying that we don't want anything downtown, but...
I'm sorry.
I think one of the conversations that we had was specifically about like a cafe, which this is a special license. We created, well, we did our liquor ordinance earlier this year. We created a new license specifically for this type of establishment, and it's a more expensive license, you know. It's not a cheap go, but you know, I think it's worth it if it's successful.
Based on what everybody's said, what should Adam's next move be?
Well, he's got the paperwork, so I think he needs to get that filled out, go through the background check, and...
So once I get that in, then does that automatically put me on the agenda for the next meeting?
If you get it in a timely manner, and we have time to go through all the necessary steps, like as far as the background checks and you know, everything that goes along with that.
By the end of my Wednesday.
Well, the next board meeting is the 25th.
Next board meeting, right.
So I would say if you can get it in by the end of next week, the background checks will take time, but we do the fact that we do kind of know you, and you've got to pass the school board background check, too, so that keeps everybody honest. We all are honest here.
If you can get it to us either by the end of this week or Monday, I mean, you know, but the end of this week would be good.
Yeah, I will.
For sure. Okay.
Sounds good. I appreciate it.
No, thank you, Adam. Any other public comment for non-agenda items? We'll move on to reports of committees. Police chief's report.
I know I'm surprised you guys didn't, ladies and gentlemen, didn't report me MIA. I really missed you tonight about 6:00, when my feet were killing me. I'm thinking, you know, I should go tonight, but I was hesitant. I didn't have the energy to leave the office and drive away into the sunset. One good thing is, I think the high school plan on locking the gate on North Street, the entrance of the kids coming in on the north access road off Ranchy, it's kind of worked out well, I think. I know the residents over there in The Hague and all that are very happy that the school traffic for the student drivers is not going through that backyard. The administration of high schools is making it work very well. So everybody's adjusted a little couple of different things on the bus routes, how parents pick them up at the junior high, but everybody's been flexible and understanding, and it's a new season, so, of school. So everything's working out.
Anything else? No problem.
I'm going to take more breath.
That's right. No, you're good. All right. Engineers reporting.
Yeah. Regarding the ramps on I-57 with Wilmington Road, obviously there's some safety issues and, you know, difficulty turning left and some delays. With the chief's help, we gathered some traffic data and sent a letter to IDOT, hoping to have a meeting with them to try to get traffic signals or improved intersections there. So it's the first step in trying to get something positive to, you know, solve that safety issue.
Good. Yeah, we keep pounding on that.
Starting timeframe on the repair of that...
The guardrail?
Guardrail, because the cement seems more dangerous than an open rail, but...
Is it on the ramps?
It's on the overpass.
If we get the meeting, it's like we can bring up the...
Yeah, it's on the south side of the overpass.
Yeah, they're kind of median, not the median, the shoulder.
Yes.
Okay. That one's been hit several times.
I can imagine.
Yeah, it's the...
They've put a concrete barrier there in place of the guardrail that was broken in.
Okay.
That's it? Okay.
Very good.
No old business. Oh, I'm sorry, building committee report.
We met on August 30th, and it's a paper here in everybody's packet. We basically went over the fences to clean up the verbiage on this, to eliminate the spacing, and also ground clearance from two to one inch, also to change the perlineal foot charge, $50. It's going to be a minimum fee of $50, replace it with a $50 building permit fee. We also discussed the sheds. There was some research that was done with the surrounding municipality, and we come up with some different things that I would like the board to take a look at, and actually, what I can do is I will put together the codes and, in reference to what we're looking at, and bring it to the board's attention to see if we can get this on an action item and get this clarified. Greg isn't here, I was going to ask him if I brought it into him, he could pass it on to the lawyer.
Okay. Yeah, no, that'd be fine.
And also, as far as the building codes, I talked...
The building, right. The building codes, right, okay. It was downstate, we had to go through the waiting period, so that should be coming back to the board for action.
What I'd like to say, maybe if we can get them both on the same agenda.
Right. Well, hopefully, the building codes I'd like to see on the next agenda are the earliest possible agenda, and the shed...
Yeah, I'll work on that. In fact, if I need some help, I can speak with a gentleman.
So the recommendation coming out of the building committee on the fence ordinance is to change, to eliminate the required spacing that's in there now?
Yes.
And to change the two-inch ground clearance to one inch?
Yes.
And then change the fee to a minimum, or a flat $50 building fee.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Want to change the two-inch gap under the fence to one inch? Originally, just a FYI, that was designed so in case of major rainstorms, there was enough room.
And that was going to be one of my questions, was the thought process between or behind that two-inch to one inch.
Because when you say one inch, and does that mean from the top of the grass, or when the grass is crushed down from the dirt or whatever?
It's ground up, one inch.
Yeah, I mean, that was something that we kind of struggled over ourselves. We just started bringing it to the board and trying to understand what the history was.
And I don't think one inch is going to make too much of a difference one way or another.
Well, and I guess my, I guess that one, I would prefer to leave it at the two-inch, and the reason for that was, like Mike said, just to have a little more room for water flow, you know, under it. I don't think, as far as a privacy issue goes, you know, the one inch doesn't make any difference, and I'd rather err on the side of the two.
Our discussion pretty much on that was two, because of rodents and, you know...
I think a rodent's going to get under a one-inch gap as well.
Rabbits, you know, those type of things.
So we talked about it and thought, well, we'll bring it back to the board and see what's going on.
And like I said, personally, I'd rather see that left at the two-inch, you know, on the bottom. That's just my personal opinion.
We didn't have a strong feeling on that one either way.
But as far as the gaps go?
Well, the gap seemed like the trend or fashion or, you know, future, it seems to be these privacy fences, especially the vinyl variety. You know, we've seen at least a dozen variances come to a vote in the past 12 months at least, and it seems like a trend going forward, so it seems prudent to address it, and it seems like the public wants that.
Well, I think the board either has to do one of two things. They either have to say, leave it and, you know, not issue any more variances, period, or change it, and that way we're not dealing with the variances all the time. It's going to be one of the two.
I agree.
I think one thing we want to be a little careful on the variances is the fences back by the back of the house, as opposed to the front.
And I think all of that is staying the same, you know, as far as placement goes.
A lot of variances they asked.
Well, no, and that's completely different. That's still a required variance. Anytime you go outside the parameters of what's allowed as far as placement goes, and to me, that's a reasonable issue for a variance, and it's looked at at a case-by-case basis, but as far as the gaps go for the privacy fence, I think it's just, you know, I agree with the committee's recommendation on that.
I think the other concern, I guess, was just making sure the backyards were maintained as well. You know, it's maybe a little easier to let it go with a privacy fence, because you can't see what's going on, and it's my opinion that a privacy dog is not a ticket to let a dog bark all day either, so...
Right, absolutely.
So I will eliminate the one inch, leave it at the two inch.
Another question I had. 350 feet. Do you realize how big a building that is to be able to put up in your backyard? It'd be like a 25 by 14. And I don't have anything necessarily against it, but if we take that into consideration, the size, I think a backyard shed is a six by eight or eight by 10, but 25 by 14 is bigger than a one-car garage.
Right.
It's a big building.
But if it's a big lot...
I think we're kind of modeling the maintino code, and that was the maximum size just based on the shed, but then they take in incorporation all improvements on the lot, driveway, house, and they could only take in, I think that was 10% of maximum lot coverage. So, you know, there's a pretty scientific approach.
You have to do a big lot.
Yeah, and it also takes away from, you know, our current ordinance that allows a 10 by 12 on a lot that probably can't really absorb that size shed, right?
So it'd be a lot that can absorb it, it's good.
Yeah.
And the other thing, I had a question. I think I got this straight. If it's 120 square foot, and you said about a slab, if it's bigger than 120 square foot, then you got to have a footing and a foundation?
Our thought process was 120 is kind of that portable shed.
If that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, anything greater than that would need to be on a cement slab with an entire rail footing.
And then the other question I had was on the overhang. Overhangs were designed for two reasons. Number one, aesthetics, and number two, to shed the water away from the building.
Well, on that matter, one thing I've noticed is people are building 10 by 12 sheds in town and then adding four or six-foot overhangs that are not really included in the current...
Is that an overhang, or is that like, what do they call that when you have an open canopy or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we didn't want a 350 square foot with another 100 foot of overhang, you know, so let's try and be more methodical in the description.
Yeah. I was thinking more in terms of a foot or two-foot overhang. It looks better.
Yeah, it does look better.
And it gets the water away from the slab and then water running in on you.
Right.
So then I questioned whether the overhang should be included in square footage.
Some of these overhangs have posts.
But from what you're saying, no, that, you know, I don't know what the proper term for that would be.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
A portico or a, I don't know.
It's like a porch.
It's not to make overhangs go away, it's actually to make sure that you don't have a, like you said, a gigantic shed and then a gigantic overhang.
Right, it's like a covered patio.
Right, so it was like, do we use the base, or do we do the building, or do we do the overhang? We thought, well, if you do the whole roof area, then that will incorporate the worst case.
Right. It's a gray issue in our current ordinance that I think we resolve with what we're looking at this type of shed ordinance.
And then I'll check in on that proper verbiage for that, too.
Thank you.
So I guess what we need from legal then is, in our fence ordinance, we're going to remove our fence ordinance and eliminate the requirement for the gap, whatever that is, how that is described in that ordinance.
Understood, yes.
And...
And we're leaving the two-inch all over to the bottom.
Is there anything in addition to the minutes that we should have in order to draft this?
On the fencing, no.
Okay, all right. And in terms, I was just dealing with awnings versus canopies and stuff today, so anything that's attached to the building but then has additional structures into the ground is usually termed a canopy, so I think that would probably work.
Canopy hush is overhang.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
All right. Anything else? Trustee Hupkey. That's it. Thank you. Okay, no old business, we'll move on to new business, special event, Piattone High School. Student council requests permission for the October 6th, 2017 annual homecoming parade, beginning at 4:00 PM. We talked about this a little bit last week. Same parade route as last year, leaving the school, going through The Hague to Corning Avenue, Corning to Conrad, Conrad to North Street, North Street to Second Street, through the downtown area, Second to Main, Main back to Corning, and Corning down to Garfield, and ending at the junior high school. So this is the student council homecoming parade, lineup at 3:45, parade beginning at 4:00 PM. So I motion to approve that special. Motion. Second?
May I second?
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Ham. Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yep.
Item B, Girl Scouts have requested permission for village-wide solicitation. Three different things, fall product program, October 1st through the 11th, Helping Hands Food Drive, October 28th, and Girl Scout Cookie Sales, January 1st through the 21st, and we have representatives from the Girl Scouts here.
Hi, I'm Kaitlin Lexel.
I'm a little bit of a girl scout.
Evie Bush.
Say that one more time.
Evie Bush.
Evie Bush? Can you spell that for me? E-V-I-E? E-V-I-E. Bush. I know what's her name.
Julie.
Julie. There's a she on that podium over there. If you could print all their names out for me, I'd appreciate that.
No problem. On the behalf of the Girl Scouts, our service student, 714, we are asking permission to the village of Piattone in our vans and program.
Fall products sales are fall fundraiser. We sell nuts, candy, door-to-door from October 1st through October 22nd. Advising girls 4:00 to 7:00 PM on weekdays and 11 to 3:00 PM on weekends for order taking.
Food drive, we are requesting permission to collect canned goods to benefit the local Helping Hand program. The date is Saturday, October 28th, collecting time is 9:30 AM to noon. We are, we're out the weekend, weekend slash week before to pass out bags and flyers to residents' homes. Girl Scouts cookie sale is January 1st through January 21st. Girls would go door-to-door to take orders and deliver in February. Advising girls 4:00 to 7:00 PM on weekdays and 11 to 3:00 PM on weekends taking orders. Parents and girls are advised to follow the safety rules and always be considered.
Very good. Any questions from the trustees? If not, a motion to approve the three different permission for the village-wide solicitation fall product program, October 1st through the 11th, 2017 Helping Hands Food Drive on October the 28th, and the Girl Scout Cookie Sales, January the 1st through the 21st.
Well, there's a typo on the October 1, it's the 1st through the 22nd.
First through the 22nd instead of October the 28th?
October 1st through the 22nd, it's collecting, the food...
Food product program.
Fall product program, yes.
Gotcha, fall product program. The 28th is correct for the Helping Hands, and the 1st through the 21st.
The church approved the date for us, so...
Very good. So with that correction?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Bowden to approve the Girl Scouts request. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thanks for all, thanks for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Good job.
All right, we're going to move item I up. Hire a part-time police officer, Robert Hill.
I have from the board a request to hire Robert Hill as a part-time officer. Mr. Hill retired as deputy chief for the Crete Police Department after about 25 years. Robert has a lot of experience in management and also in investigation and training, and that would make him an asset for some time he has available now, he's on the retired list.
So this is a part-time employment position?
Yes, correct.
I think it's a very good asset for our department. I've met deputy chief Hill a couple times and...
Has it funded in the budget?
Yes.
Any questions, discussion? If not, a motion to approve the hiring of Robert Hill as a part-time police officer. In fact, the chief?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Motion. Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yep.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Item C, that's you.
Sorry, this is...
Yeah, I know you are. Good idea. Item C, Piattone Historical Society requests review of old fence replacement quotes and approval to proceed with project. Mr. Rocker?
All right, all right. So Steve Rocker, I'm here representing the Historical Society. We need to, I want to get the fencing. It's this foot rail fence that's around the mill. I think you guys are familiar probably, but anyway, it's a section that's on the south side of the property facing Corning, and then runs down along the side of the mill on the west side, and the fencing down there is, it's pretty rotted, falling apart, and we want to get the fencing replaced. Got two estimates, one for $16.50 and the other for, I think, $17.95. So requesting approval to go forward with this and have this not a part of the annual budget in towards the mill for maintenance each year.
Right. We have $5,000 budgeted from the village for the mill for the Historical Society for maintenance. As of now, we have used zero out of this year's budget, so the money is there. I spoke with the treasurer about that, so. Did you have, I'm assuming you're going with the low bin?
Yes, I recommend going with the end of the lower bins by the fence above the rest.
It's going to look just like the fence you've got now.
Same thing. This would be set with the force going into a concrete. Both estimates are identical to the work being done.
Can I ask you, where is the fence above the rest located?
I don't know where the office is at. One of the other guys got the estimate?
But it's not here in Piattone.
It's not here in Piattone.
That's why I would rather see Illinois Exterior having it, because it is a loco in Piattone, it's $145 more, just to keep our money here in the village.
If that's your wish, that's fine, I need...
And that's why I was kind of bringing that subject up.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. So it'd be...
So it'd be Illinois Exterior, and so $17.95, I believe?
This is coming out of, this is coming out of our budget. It's money that's been budgeted for the Historical Society, so we could, we didn't solicit the bids, they solicited the bids.
Okay.
So...
Should we inquire for them to match it at least? I mean, I hate to, I think it's good to keep business in town, but it's also not, in-town guy gets a high bid all the time either.
Right, right, exactly.
Something worth considering.
What's your opinion?
No, I guess I was looking for clarification.
On how to do this?
Basically, yes.
Yes, okay. I would recommend that you, well, you didn't solicit the bids.
We did not solicit the bids, correct.
And we have the, what's your budgeting under?
We budgeted $5,000, we budgeted $5,000, but the Historical Society typically approaches the board, you know, when they want to spend money out of that $5,000.
Or some sort of maintenance improvement, just to maintain the mill and take care of the upkeep.
Because the village owns the mill, to clarify that.
I think the cleanest way to do it would be just to say, rejecting the two bids and awarding it to, we're waiving competitive bidding and awarding it to...
Illinois Exterior?
Illinois Exterior.
Okay.
With the ask of, if you would consider meeting the, I don't know, can we do that?
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
And if you said no, then where do we go?
Well, turn off the TV. I guess if you said no, we can negotiate, how's that? Tell them to call me. So, I need a motion to reject, reject the bids received and award the bid to not exceed $17.95 to Illinois Exterior, with the possibility of...
And a way of competitive.
And a way of competitive.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Hupkey. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
And Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next up. Item D, fence variance. Kim and Rich, Rich and Kim Ingram, 412 South Ranchy, request a variance for a six-foot privacy fence. Hello, how are you?
Good.
Good. So you are requesting a variance, and this variance is only for the gap question that we were talking about previously. Everything else with the fence is within the parameters of our current fence ordinance. Any questions, Mrs. Ingram, on the board?
I, I just had a comment. It just seems like people are starting to use this privacy for dogs to eliminate the barking. It does not eliminate bark, absolutely. I have dogs, it does not eliminate barking, just so you know, but that's, I'm just, it's just a comment, that's all it is. It does not eliminate barking.
Gotcha. So basically, you're just looking to try to shut them out.
Kind of keep it quiet, but it's really, really what we're going for, I see what you're saying, but, you know, you let the dogs out to go back down with the other ones towards the.
I got Jack Russell terriers that live down the street from me to bark, and then ours start barking my dog, and so it's, yeah. I'm just saying, it's.
Any questions or discussion, other comments from the trustees?
But again, just to clarify, it's only for the half-inch gap?
That is correct. That is the only reason for the variance.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Second.
So, a motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Hupkey to approve the variance for the elimination of the gaps in the fence at four twelve South Ratchee Road. We will have an ordinance coming back to the board at the next meeting for approval, but you can move forward with that.
Right, that's just to tie up the technical themselves.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yep.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
Right. Item E, fence variance. Tammy, help me with your last name.
Melkarz.
Thank you. Uh, it's four eighteen South Ratchee Road.
Neighbors.
Neighbors, okay. Request a, a variance for the six-foot privacy fence.
It's actually gonna be the same exact.
Same exact fence, same exact reason, same exact.
The fence will be the same fence between your lots?
Yes.
It won't be two fences, just one?
It'll be one fence.
Right.
All right, good.
Do you have a dog?
I do.
She doesn't like it, because she's.
Actually, they're cousins.
So a motion to approve the variance to eliminate the half-inch gap for the fence located at four eighteen South Ratchee Road, with the understanding that an ordinance will come back to the board at the next meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Jones.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item F, new business registration, River Valley Physical Therapy Spine and Joint Center LLC being located at four twenty-two Governor's Highway, Gerard Woker. Adam, do you know anything about this?
Little bit.
Why don't, why don't you step up and give a little?
Oh, boy.
Since you're here, I'll make you talk.
They're gonna be in unit number four, I think it is.
It is unit four.
Unit four, unit four.
Which one is that?
That's where Meltoe was.
Okay.
Um, so.
So that's next to Sammy's.
Sammy's, correct. It's really the, most of the layout inside is not gonna change much, just because her rooms and stuff actually will work out well for what he's gonna be doing.
Okay.
So.
Physical therapy. Physical therapy?
Yeah. Um, I don't know a whole lot more than that.
Okay. I had spoken.
This, yes, yes.
So he's already doing this somewhere else?
Correct.
Okay.
I had spoken with your parents previously about this, and they were very excited. They thought it was a real good fit for.
Yes, he seems like, just met him the other day, seems like a really nice guy, I think he'll be good for the community.
Good. Thank you, Adam. Any other questions or discussion?
You have a question?
Yes, sir.
When the business is coming to town and there's a business registration, is there any ti, a typical type of a fee for those?
It's twenty-five dollars.
And is it every business in town paying that?
It's a recurring, it's a yearly fee.
Is it mandatory, or is it kind of a voluntary thing?
It's sent out to everybody, every year, for the renewal.
There's always a few that don't send it back, but it's sent out to everybody.
That's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, a motion to approve the business registration for River Valley Physical Therapy Spine and Joint Center.
Motion.
Second? Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Bowden.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
And Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
And Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Item G, ordinance, an ordinance authorizing Aqua Illinois Incorporated successors and assigns to construct, operate, and maintain a water transmission, storage, and distribution system, and wastewater collection treatment and transmission system in the village of Peatone. The ordinance sets forth the terms and conditions of the proposed franchise agreement between the village of Peatone and Aqua Illinois Incorporated. So this has been a ongoing process for a few weeks.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Uh, when we did the asset purchase agreement with Aqua, uh, there was a proposed franchise agreement that is an attachment to that, an exhibit to that, um, and then the ordinance you approved regarding the asset purchase agreement said, once we negotiated the terms of that, uh, the final document would be attached to that asset purchase agreement. It's gonna be filed as part of the ICC proceeding that Aqua is, is undergoing regarding the sale. So I've had a number of conversations with, with Jim and, and Craig and their attorney as we negotiated back and forth on the terms of this. The one that was originally attached to the, uh, uh, asset purchase agreement was a little bit bare bones, so I, I took the one that Mantino had entered into them, and we kind of used that as a base. It had a lot of good terminology and, uh, and, and so we, we made some modifications to that based on our back and forth, and I, I put together a memo here with some of the, the key terms. This is gonna be a twenty-year agreement, uh, giving them the rights, once the, once the ICC approves everything, to be the, the water and sewer provider for the village. They're gonna come to the village for permits, uh, for any work they do, if required by the village code, just like any other utility. They're gonna confer with the village periodically, once a year at least, on, on kind of the capital improvements that they're contemplating, make sure everybody's on the same page. They're happy to meet more, more often if necessary, um, but that's kind of the baseline in, in the agreement. They're gonna work with both the village and the fire protection district to, to ensure that the, the fire suppression systems and the hydrants and everything are consistently up to snuff and, and provide sufficient water supply to make sure those fire protection and suppression needs are met. Sets, sets forth all the basic kind of standards that they will meet, um, and, as, as well as the ICC oversight for them in providing the water and sewer service. Provides for the, for Aqua to indemnify and hold harmless the village, uh, while, relative to, to both the water and this, the wastewater system. The village has a right to impose a franchise fee or utility tax in the future if it so desires, um, subject to ICC approval. If you'll recall in the asset purchase agreement, we had an option to buy back the system after a period of time, um, so we built that into the franchise agreement as well, and, uh, and they will provide water service to the village municipal building and public works buildings at no cost. I think we also include in there, for instance, if, if you guys were to sod a new park, for instance, that they'll give you water for a year to kind of make sure the sod takes and everything else, uh, at that location. And it has a bunch of other stuff in there, but those are some of the, kind of the key terms. Jim's here, and, and he and I are happy to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
One thing that I just thought of as we were sitting here, the employment agreement. Where does that fit in? Does that, that doesn't fit into here?
No, that's a separate.
That's a separate document.
Right, and so that also, uh, we've reached agreement on that, and so that, final terms of that gets attached to the asset purchase agreement too.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're happy to bring it back to the board if you guys want to see it, but that.
I just wanted to make sure that it, you know, it was there.
Yeah, it's all, it's all set.
Okay.
How does the capital improvement process work?
Typically, we, we run on five-year capital improvement plans. So we would consult, obviously, with the manager here, in this case, Jim. Let's put a plan together. We'll sit and then we'll consult with the, we'll take our plan, meet with your streets and sanitation, your public works director, and say, okay, what's your road project? I'm gonna be with Troy even and say, and try to, we might have our stuff timed out in year five, we have that same road project in year two, we'll make sure we meet the schedule so we're doing it together, so. You know what, we, we, we put our plan together, it, it changes, it evolves as things comes up. You got a, a bad main break in a section, you start ripping up, and it keeps going back and back, and next year you realize, we might as well just replace this whole section of pipe. That affects the capital, we might pump something else down our route, or if it just needs it, we put it in. I mean, we try to stick to the, our plan, five-year plan, but, you know, out of sight, out of mind, you really don't know what you're getting yourself into sometimes until you start digging it up. So it's, it's never evolving. We have statewide depreciation spend, we always try to stay within that, so if I'm pulling money in here, I might pull from somewhere else. It all washes in the end, but if we need to put it in, we put it in, and we, we don't just ignore it, so.
So if we have, if we come up with a wishlist item, and I can't think of anything wishlist, painting the, the tower, you know, that's something that we would come to you and say, what do you think about painting the tower, and walk me through that part?
Absolutely. So we, we take great pride in working with our, our community partners. If the mayor or trustee say, you know, this thing's, we really like to get it painted, believe me, it's gonna get moved up on the list. It's just, it's the way it is. You know, this franchise agreement today really is, is, is an agreement that says if we don't cooperate, these are what's gonna happen. In reality, we're gonna cooperate, we're gonna work together, and probably after you guys pass this, I doubt you're even gonna really look at the franchise agreement, hopefully forever, because unless there's a problem, you're really not gonna refer to it.
Right.
So it's all about working together.
Yeah, but, so whatever we ask you to do, and then you do, gets transferred back into the rates, so that's kind of a check on us to make sure that we're not asking for just frivolous stuff.
Correct, and then you'll be in our statewide rates, so that all the spend here impacts everyone in our statewide, and it goes both ways.
Okay.
I have a question on the franchise agreement. You actually own it all, but is the franchise agreement more of just an agreement, that you agree to do the things and we agree to do things, and at the end of twenty years, that would be when we could either buy it back or just renew it? Is that what that means?
The franchise agreement is good for twenty years. Really, it's, and Michael, you're correct, it's, it's really, it's giving us the right to work within your public right-of-way and your public ways. If we didn't have that, obviously, most of your pipes, I mean, I'd say probably ninety-eight percent of them are within some sort of right-of-way. We couldn't go in, dig your road up, um, and maintain that system, so we need the right to have that. But after twenty years, we reevaluate it, say, if you guys want to buy it, obviously, that's more on the asset purchase agreement side, but the, the franchise agreement refers to it as well. But ideally, at year eighteen or something, we start, maybe there's something in there you guys want, or maybe something in there isn't working for us, and we have to change it out a little bit. And we had that bunch of stuff in there from Mantino that was specific for water, because that's all we, we owned at the time over there. They really never used it, it was just in for fail-safe, so when it gets renegotiated, I'm sure some of the things will change out of that agreement.
Another question I had was, I was looking at these insurance coverages and the million-dollar liability, which seemed extremely low to me. In any way, shape, or form, could we be on the hook and liable for anything that you would screw up or hurt or damage or kill somebody?
I know we, and there's some indemnification clause in there, and this whole harmless things, and then Michael could address that probably better. We have self-retention amounts, I don't know what the amount, five million, I, I don't know what they are, they're, they're big, you know, we're a six-billion-dollar company, so we do a lot of self-retention.
That's what I assumed, but when I saw the one million, I thought that just seemed.
Yeah, and we just carried that over from Mantino, I, I, I agree with you, it, they could be higher, but I figured you guys had probably quite a bit more coverage than that anyways. Yeah, absolutely.
But there's no way we're ever on the hook for anything?
No, no, there's a indemnification in here for, for anything they do related to the system. I mean, if we were, for instance, to, you know, while doing some other work to, uh, cause a main to, to break or something, then that's a different situation, but in their day-to-day operation of the, of the system and their use of our right-of-ways, if they got a pipe sticking out, you know, and there's some kind of issue with that, that's their, that's, that's on them. There's some notification things in here, if we know we're gonna be certain, some people are gonna be without service, it's obviously we're gonna notify them, but there's, I don't know, if they were to replace the main break, or maybe there's a big break or something, there's, there's things in there that says we have to notify the, the village. Community, so you guys know and understand it.
I wasn't concerned with that, but if you're driving your truck down the road and a dozen pieces of fifty-foot pipe fall off and causes a fifty-car pileup, and you got a hundred-million-dollar lawsuit with all these people.
Right, but, but think of this, I, I mean, once we sell the system to them, and, I mean, they become kind of the equivalent of Nikor or somebody else, uh, and so, you know, same kind of situation, they could do the same thing, and we wouldn't have any liability, so.
So the agreement's ten years. What's the renewal clause, or what's the, what happens after twenty years? I'm sorry, the agreement's twenty years, what hap, how does it renew?
Like, like Jim started to say, typically, you know, as you notice the term coming up, we talk about whether anything needs to be changed, uh, if there may be some changes in the regulatory environment in the meantime, or just how these things operate, that we might want to look at modifying some of this and see how the agreements work, if there've been any issues over time. And then we just talk, and, and, you know, when franchise agreements renew, there's typically most of it stays the same.
There's some verbiage about the fire protection, I wouldn't pretend to be a fire expert, is the fire chief looked at, and it is, I mean, like, main size, I guess it's okay with all this, yeah?
I mean, I've spoken with, I haven't spoken to him specifically about the franchise agreement, but I've spoken with him about, you know, the Aqua deal in general, and, and he was very pleased, you know, with the direction that the village was going. He felt that it was definitely gonna benefit the fire protection district and.
Okay.
Fire suppression capabilities.
And even though the fire protection district is separate from the village, we made sure to put in here that Aqua's going to cooperate with them, work with them, and make sure that they have what they need in order to, to do the fire protection. Last thing we want.
One more question I had, the franchise fee that we can't impose, is that, does that go on people's water bills, or is that just a franchise fee towards Aqua?
That's towards Aqua. It would go right on the water bill, and it would be nine-nine and a balance. We would just be a pass-through?
Yeah.
I think we get twenty-five percent.
It would be a utility tax, but the same thing on franchise fee?
It's the exact same way that you have it with Nikor and, and Comet, so it's, you can see it on your bill.
But to make it clear right now, there, there is no.
There is no.
There is no utility tax or franchise fee as part of this agreement.
Right, we just wanted to reserve the option.
And as the village grows, you grow with us. There was, there was language in there to talk about you guys growing with us, remember? Okay.
That is the plan.
Just wanted to.
Yep.
No, sure.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions, discussion, thoughts? If not, we need a motion to adopt ordinance number seventeen-dash-twelve, ordinance authorizing Aqua Illinois Incorporated successors and assigns to construct, operate, and maintain a water transmission storage and distribution system, and a wastewater collection treatment and transmission system in the village of Peatone.
Motion.
Second.
I'll second that.
Motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Bowden.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Huffkey?
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mike. Item H, approval or payment for two thousand seventeen sidewalk project, J.J. Moore Concrete Contractors request payment in the amount of fifty-four thousand three seventeen sixty-three for work completed on the two thousand seventeen sidewalk project.
This is for the sidewalk replacements that took place this year, the project is complete, however, we're holding five percent retention, just to make sure everything, no problems arise in that the restoration, the landscaping takes. So the word's been reviewed by public works, and they are satisfied.
I have a question, and I hope I'm wrong on this. On the corner of Route fifty and forty, the stoplight's going to be, three sections, forty-foot walk and fifty-foot of curbing was put in, is that going to be tore up next summer when we put that intersection in there?
I heard that that was put in with the reservicing project, right?
That was, Gallagher did that with the state.
That wasn't something that our project did, that's something that the state project did without notifying us, and the state knew about our intersection improvement, because I had meetings with them about it previously, about detours and everything, because it was supposed to happen this year, so they were aware of their project, so I don't know why they did that.
Just government action and a waste of probably five thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, when I saw that happening, I was confused.
Question, answer.
All right, same, well, a block further north, there's, there's a, looks like a wheelchair ramp that comes down.
North Street.
Yeah, and there's some giant walls there, is the purpose of those, do you have any idea?
Probably to hold back the dirt, because the grade is so steep, it's so much less than the surrounding.
Parkway height?
Okay. Holds the dirt back off of it.
It's something they just put in.
Yes, yes.
I haven't seen it, sorry.
It's probably about this tall.
More than that.
I'd say at least a foot.
Soil retention, is that what you think the curbs are for? Okay.
I don't know, it'd been my guess, too.
Oh, so is it a side curb attached to the sidewalk ramp?
Yes, both sides.
Okay, that's a new standard that IDOT's been pushing for ADA compliance, and the ADA rules seem to change yearly for the sidewalk ramps, so it's hard to keep up with, but the new standard is they want the side curbs in addition to the five, or a lot of people say it's four feet wide, but they want the side curbs on there. I think they're not needed in a lot of locations, and, you know, especially where the grade is flat, but, so, that's the new IDOT standard, technically, they don't always seem to go in that way, because they're not needed in a lot of cases, that's probably what that is.
Okay.
Yeah, I've seen those other places, too.
I just first saw it and thought it was a mistake, shows you what I know.
And they did stamp the concrete everywhere?
They did, I think in longer stretches, I think when it was just a couple squares, they may not have asked about that, but they did in most areas, they special order a stamp and a date and everything, so.
Make a motion.
Pardon me?
You need a motion?
For, oh, yes, yes, to pay that, yes, thank you, I was on to something else. Yeah, a motion from trustee Ham, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee Jones, to approve the payment of fifty-four thousand three seventeen sixty-three for the two thousand seventeen sidewalk project to J.J. Moore County.
With the five percent holdback.
With the five percent holdback. Thank you.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yep.
Mr. Huffkey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Questions in the press, no press, I have one thing I wanted to mention, some people have received letters in regards to the electric aggregation, and I wanted to try to clarify a little bit about that, and I'm going to read something that I'd gotten from the Will County Government League. So, as you are aware, the village has entered into a consortium with other towns and villages in the county, and that's in Will County, to once again take advantage of lower rates that will be offered below the ComEd rate. ComEd has announced rate increases for following winter months higher than what you are now seeing on your bills. The consortium is contracted with Dyna-G Energy, Dyna-G Energy, to bring the lower electric rates to you. Remember, ComEd still controls all other fees on your bill, and those can be raised at any time. So basically, what this is, we're part of the Will County Government League, and as part of that government league, we're part of this consortium that has participated in aggregated electric rates in the past. Last summer, that last aggregation had ended, and the ComEd rates were lower than anything out there, so everybody was sent a letter, you know, stating it would be, you know, probably best for you to call and opt back in to ComEd, which I think most everybody did. So now the government league, through this consortium, has just signed a contract with this Dyna-G Energy to enter into a new aggregation, so if you have the opportunity as a resident to opt out of that, okay, so if you do not want to participate in that, in the letter that you get, you make the phone call, and you opt out, and you stay with whatever provider you're currently with. But this isn't something the village isn't getting any money for, it's just part of a program that we participate in, trying to get the lowest rate we can for the residents of the village.
Basically, these guys are running interference for us in getting us the best deal.
Correct, because we're in a pool, we're in a bigger consortium than just by ourselves.
Then you said it's seven point one percent?
I think, I don't.
Oh, seven point one per kilowatt hour.
Yeah.
And ComEd is six point eight.
Right, but they're going to go, but they're going up, and that's where some of the confusion's coming from, right now, they haven't switched over, and I didn't think the letters were going to start going out until the end of September, was what I was originally told, so when I found out that some people had received them already, I was kind of surprised. But I was just trying to get a little bit of information out there, and we'll put more information out as we get it.
So if you don't do anything, you're in the cheapest supplier.
Correct, you're in the consortium, which is supposed to be, according to what we're being told.
The cheapest supplier.
Correct.
Okay, but if you look on your bill today, you may.
Correct, if you look on it today, you may, it may not be.
That's where the confusion would come in.
And that really is, because ComEd has not raised their rates yet, probably on the next bill, I would assume.
How convenient.
Anything else from any of the trustees?
That's all I have, is that.
Just want to say good luck to the Peatone High School football team, they're having a heck of a season so far, and pretty exciting for the community. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Bowden, and seconded by trustee Jones.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yep.
Mr. Ham?
Yes.
Mr. Huffkey?
Yes.
Meanings adjourned?